If any of y'all are ever in the office in the, in the near future, Joey Lachler gave me a picture that he got and it's of the town in nineteen nineteen.
Really?
Yes, it's still a dirt road, there's Model T fours.
That's really cool.
It's really awesome looking.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Mm-hmm. Todd's building's not there yet in the picture, uh, it's just that corner one there. Ooh, you're late.
Should be amended after, right?
Yeah.
That clock should be a pretty good time. Been an hour. Did they have a good weekend? All teams win? Which ones? Who do you follow? Were they invited this year? Wisconsin pulled another one out. Yeah, we took it over in the last two minutes. They could've won that game. The Packers won. If you don't mind, sir, please.
Gracious Father, we come before you as humbly as we know how, I'll tell you thank you and that we love you for all things that you have given us. God, and we ask that you would just continue to watch over us and keep us and cover us as our first responders serve in the town. God, and as our leaders of the town who love this town so much, continue to drive this town forward in the right capacity, in the right manner. We just ask that you would give us grace and give us mercy. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Frick, we're going straight on the end here, you do have Councilman David Rodriguez.
Yes, sir, here.
Okay, you do have Justin Flowers next in line.
Here.
And Courtney Woodaker is, and then you do have Mayor Charles Cooper.
Here.
Okay, next in line is Todd Askin.
Here.
And then we have Stephen Terrell.
Here.
The old business, um, you can, that's what I was looking for. I've asked, uh, Councilman Atkins, and this is, this is, from my clarity as I was working through the budget information last week, uh, I didn't quite grasp everything he said the other night, so I wanted him to just go back over quickly on, uh, what we're looking at here. Um, we do have the, uh, which you know that the, uh, P scale went into effect last Wednesday, correct? So again, I, I didn't quite understand what I was looking at here and, uh, the discussion with him and if he would just give us a quick synopsis.
Okay, so on the left in the first column, you got the FY twenty-four actual expenses that was taken off of the data given to us by the town for each of the four departments there, and you see the total was eight fifty-six, seven fifty-seven. The payroll in the next column over was the payroll from the actual payroll. And then the less payroll is, is exactly what it means, just minus the payroll. And that number, uh, minus the payroll should be toward all other expenditures except for payroll. I took the FY twenty-five estimated income, again provided by the town, it's a little bit higher than the first initial one, was I think nine sixty-something. This one's nine ninety. The ten percent was just throwing something against the wall for us to at least put something in savings toward a general fund. And then, um, the minus expenses after that, it left, um, thirty-four, nine seventy-two. So, and then proposal one was based off of the similar thing, I don't know what these, um, these numbers, mine look like they're written in the hand.
Okay, it's because I scribbled them and you took my page.
Oh, sorry. Um, so again, it's the same premises, uh, but then the, you really need the supporting sheet that broke down each proposal in there, but it's based off the same thing. Is, I took the less payroll from the actual expenses and then, um, subtracted whatever the proposal was from that. Um, and that's how I come up with that total. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sure. So each one was broken down on proposal, had all four departments in it with a just perspective wage versus the hours a week, again, we're taking off the original data. And then I based this off a fifty-two week total. And that's how I come up with the number. And then proposal two is the same thing.
And basically it was, I was confused when we were working this last week to, uh, go through with the chief and Eric. I wanted to, I wanted to just put this in front of you, it was a working meeting, if there are any other questions or, you know, I got most of my questions answered when we had a one-on-one. If anybody else has any questions or comments or you're doing, you know, I just want to make sure it's clear to everybody how we did this and what we did.
Yeah, so on proposal one, you see the FY estimated income's gonna stay the same. And then minus the ten percent, and then I took whatever the proposal was, the total up there, subtracted it from that and you can see that it had forty-two thousand and forty-four dollars left over. As I guess discretionary or, or excess, um, money. That's, um, that's basically it.
Mr. Rodriguez? Justin, Mr. Flowers?
I'm good.
You're good, you're good. I'll make one, one comment, uh, we did find that, uh, we have been receiving a check for motor vehicle, um, I guess taxes and sales, uh, through the county. Uh, we found out last week that that has to go into also a separate account. Um, we queried numerous, or Eric queried numerous, um, municipalities, most of them were not aware of this. Uh, one clerk came up on the net and said, referenced, you know, this part of the Alabama code. Uh, we talked to ALM and it is correct that this money needs to be going into a separate account, so we're initiating an account for that cash check that we received. We also initiated an account for the ten percent. You know, Eric and I will be working on what we want to put in there on a monthly basis and see if we can, uh, to do that. So those, both of those accounts are gonna be set up.
No, it's already done today and I'm just waiting on Richard Dunn to give it, okay.
And that's, that's for, uh, Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Atkins, we're probably gonna have to sign two more account forms when he sends them out. The other things that are, are going on here, um, I've asked Gracie to give us what she knows about the update on the Civic Plus. Would you do that first?
The, um, everything is ready to go, we've approved the website, we're just waiting for training and implementation. The Civic Plus training is tomorrow at twelve, and then again on Thursday at two.
So what was the approval on the website?
They're approving the design that they put forth.
Okay, yeah, that, that should've come really before us too, for us to have a discussion on, on what we expect, um, to present from the town. I mean, there's some critical, the whole purpose on doing this was that critical information gets out and that we mandate certain things that will be done on the website.
Let me back that up, um, Tuesday and Thursday are both I three vertical, aren't they?
I believe that's Civic Plus.
Okay. Okay, I thought it was actually vertical.
So do we, um, how was the proposal done? I mean, do we have access to anything?
It was sent to Chuck and I as a link, and you go and click on the link and you just view their basic design, it's got an area for minutes, it's got an area for all the departments.
A lot of this is still, from what I've seen, is still adjustable. You can send that link out.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes, there's, there's things we need to mandate during the restructure that, that is definitely on there, okay?
So we'll send the link out.
And then, um, since we're still on Civic Plus, have we, is I three vertical compatible with Civic Plus, you know? They said it was compatible with most.
I haven't asked specifically.
Okay, 'cause I think that would be critical too on future development too, I mean, I'm hoping it is since we're going down that road. But, you know, you can tie the website into this too and it'd be so much easier for the citizens on keeping up or paying their trash or whatnot.
I think it's just adding the link to the website when the website's complete, 'cause I can put, as soon as I get the system, I can put the link for that system and the bill paying part of it on the website we're currently using.
Okay. And there's gonna be, there's I three vertical for garbage, there's at least four ways that people can pay it, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And it'll be on the initial bills, in fact, most of the bills will have instructions on how they can pay their bills on the backside of the bill.
That is correct.
Anything, and then, anything else on, we'll send the link out and I think we're still, we're still working out, we got, we'll be able to have you look at it, make adjustments, and go back to Civic Plus. I three vertical?
Um, it's pretty much, we're waiting on the system, have they've gotten all the data they need, waiting on the system and training. But they've gotten everything from us that we need.
I three vertical, I think is moving forward fairly quickly and strongly and...
Fairly quick. Hoping to have, yes. Hoping to have the first bills put out in the first couple of weeks of November.
Yeah. I think that's gonna go forward, uh, hopefully with very few hitches.
Now, they have a website, correct, I three vertical?
I would think the company does.
I'm just, I guess my, my question I'm trying to lead up to is if there were a way to pay online?
Yeah, there's gonna be a QR code on the back of your bill, there's gonna be a website, mm-hmm.
There's gonna be like, yeah, there, this is, it's a fairly energetic, energetic computer system that, you know, from what we've seen, what they've, uh, proposed to us, we've downgraded because we're only doing garbage. They've had, there are so many things this program could do, um, and all we're looking for them to do is build for garbage, you know? Um, there were taxes, there were license fees, there were the water department, there were meter readings. I mean, this, this was a very good program, um, and we're asking them, they keep asking us about things and we say, we're just looking for garbage. Fifteen dollars, you know, in the future, in the future, we can expand.
It sounds like they have a full suite of services that they're offering and we're just using one little piece.
They do.
That's right, and we're using one little piece, so it can be expanded anytime in the future.
That's good.
New business, I'll listen to any comments on I three vertical. The Light the Night, which is sponsored by?
Connect Church.
Say it again?
Connect Church.
Connect Church will be on the thirtieth October, and I think the hours for that was again five to seven?
I believe so, yes.
Five to seven?
Six to seven, sixteen, yeah, I think so.
The Town's, um, trick-or-treating, and we were gonna put something out on the webpage and, that we have, and in the town. It's scheduled for five to seven on the thirty-first, which is Saturday night.
Thursday night?
Five to seven, what'd I say?
You said Saturday, Thursday is the...
Oh, I thought Friday's the thirty-first, isn't it?
No, Thursday, Halloween's on Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, uh, Light the Night is the thirtieth and the Trick-or-Treating is the night of the thirty-first, five to seven.
So we're doing, why, why don't we do a trick-or-treating a different night?
This is a, what do I wanna say, an effort by that, that church to have a...
So Wednesday night get together for the community, um, they were gonna do games and, just like they did last year.
Yeah.
But you guys...
It's a separate whole event.
You guys, um, I don't remember what dates you guys chose last year for the town to trick-or-treat on, and nobody trick-or-treated on that night and still trick-or-treated on Halloween night anyway.
I do.
So...
Well, we need to update the minutes on here, man, 'cause it says trick-or-treat October thirtieth.
Yeah. Well, we'll adjust the minutes, uh, Light the Night is the thirtieth, Trick-or-Treating is the thirty-first, again, five to seven for both events. We're working, uh, in coordination for the Christmas parade, which will be December seventh. People can get, uh, forms to sign up, there is no fee this year to, uh, participate in the Christmas parade. The, uh, it'll start again, I've already called, called to the county, we'll start at the, uh, Farm Center. Line up at the Farm Center like we did last year that I remember, and proceed down to, uh, the corner of Main Street where you turn off and... Correct, Chief, we just go to the intersection? Right, come back when church, come back. Yeah.
You have the sign-up forms?
The sign-up forms are on the table, out in the front.
Actually, I think Ms. Barbara took them all this afternoon and I have to print off some on, yeah, stop by my office and I'll print you off one if you want.
Okay. Now, there was a suggestion, wasn't mine, didn't come out of my office, that we put a pickup truck together or a small trailer together and the council ride in the Christmas parade, up to you guys.
Now, Chuck, what do you mean that one?
I'm not making that up, that was a suggestion.
Chuck says we've got a, we've got a float pro on the council.
Chuck stopped me during the parade the other day and said we needed a town cap before.
Yeah, but that wasn't my idea to start with. Anyway, so it's a, it's a thought.
Yes.
I mean, we could make it happen, but I didn't see what the budget was nearly.
There is no budget, it's somebody's pickup truck and some lawn chairs or a small trailer. Up, up to the council if you wish to practice.
We can do a real town.
We'd like to, uh, have the council consider for the, the next meeting whether, uh, we're gonna do any sort of a one-time Christmas bonus. As part for discussion.
Okay, so, um...
It wasn't really budgeted for.
Well, we got forty-six thousand, forty-four dollars to play with.
The, uh, let's see here. I have a couple of comments, I'll just make some, give you all some information when we get down to Mayor's comments. Mr. Rodriguez, any comments, questions, concerns?
Um, if you took the relative.
I did?
That's, that's it.
Okay. We, that's, I'm, I'm gonna make a comment on that. Mr. Flowers?
Um, I just got the one thing on the update for the lighting. For Alabama Power and Aldad, we had a meeting on October the eleventh and, uh, with Aldad and Alabama Power, and so the notes from the meeting, I'll just read those really quick. Alabama Power has the go-ahead from Chris Henley, Aldad Lighting, on the photometrics for Tyler Street and Lawrence Drive. Alabama Power intends to resubmit the photometrics to Aldad Lighting with revisions at Burmwood Road. Alabama Power intends to submit permit package to Aldad Enterprise District for Tyler Street and Lawrence Drive within one to two weeks. If the package is completed, it will take about four weeks to process the permit, then Alabama Power can begin to work at these two locations. Alabama Power will meet with Henley's, Chris Henley's recommendations at Burmwood Ro-Road and then submit a second permit package to the Enterprise District Office at that time. It will take about four weeks to process the second permit if it is a complete submittal package. Hmm, so, that was from October the eleventh, and that's all I got on that.
As, as, as you, I, I, I read that too, but as you read through it, what do you think the estimated timeline is?
I think about, if we stay on top of them, I think about six to eight weeks for Tyler Street and Lawrence. And I'd say, looks like about twelve weeks on Burmwood Road.
Okay.
That's just me guessing.
Well, that's sort of what I was thinking, but I wanted to get your opinions. Mr. Atkins?
Um, yeah. Can we, Mayor, can we have the, um, street department look at possibly, um, some of the rougher areas on McKinnon Street as far as the, the, the real estate between the sidewalk and the road there? We got some really grown-up areas that they can get a weed eater and just, uh, take care of some of those spots. The, the... The ones on McKinnon and John Street, South Town. But just anything that, if they can just provide a little attention to there, it'd be great and appreciated.
You're talking from the, uh, stoplight back towards City Hall?
Just anything really that.
Well, we wanna clean it up for the, for the...
Just cleaning up period, there's some spots that look a little rough too on South Town especially.
Okay.
So, now, you don't have anything?
Uh, this time already, comments from anybody in the... Yes, ma'am?
I'm tired of not being able to go home when I get off work because cars are parked in the road.
Which road?
One twenty-two at elementary school. I had to sit in line today to go home. This, I've lived all over the nation, this is the only town I've ever lived in that you can just park in the road.
And they're waiting to pull into the school, correct?
Yes. But that still does not give them the right to park on a state road.
Okay.
Because there is no way to get into Spark Street regardless of an emergency vehicle that's needed. Also, we've got a lot of people that's coming to cut grass, bury lawnmowers, and there are trailers and trucks that's parked in the road.
Okay.
Okay, let's get it taken care of and, and everybody on Spark Street will appreciate it. We're tired of it.
We'll talk to the police department.
Okay, they all want to...
No, not tonight.
There's nothing I can do.
I know.
I won't go off with you, I have fought, I have fought that dog and I've fought that dog.
Well, it's between the state, the town, and the school board, and there's plenty of land...
The school, um, we let it to them to do that, and I've asked for a turn lane there, and the state has turned me down, so there will be no turn lane. If the school wants to pay for one, they will do it, the school's not gonna pay for one.
The county, the county board of education is now looking to put a turn lane in there.
Well, when there's an accident there and it, and somebody gets killed, then I guess everybody can consider it, 'cause there was a minor one there this afternoon.
Okay. Any other comments from the public?
There, um, the people that just came in, they wanted to let you guys know about an event that they had going on, um, and I felt like it was gonna be better for them to explain everything to you guys.
That's fine, if you...
You guys can go ahead.
Some comments?
You guys can go ahead.
Please stand. Stand and tell us who you are.
My name is Christine, and I represent the, uh, Filipino-American community of southeast Alabama. Um, it's actually, sir, a community group, um, where there's like more than five hundred, almost a thousand members. Um, and we're gonna hold our event over here at your, um, D and D licensing...
The Farm Center.
The Farm Center?
The Farm Center, yes, sir, and, um, so we're basically just here, we would like to invite you to be our special guest, and...
Who?
All of you. All of you, since we're doing it here in New Brockton, um...
I think I've got a letter on my desk, uh, you were talking about donations and the cost of it.
Yes, sir, that, that too.
That also, and we would like you to be a case speaker.
Well, let's, let's, uh, get together and talk about this?
Yes, sir.
Um, 'cause I saw there was a fee for attending, is that...
Yes, sir, we're, we're, it's a fundraising event. Except, but, um, it's, but if you're gonna be our VIP guest, of course. Speaker.
Give me, give me the, the date once more because I have the letter, I read it this morning.
It's on December fourteenth, it starts at five o'clock.
December fourteenth, we'll, uh...
It's a Saturday, sir.
We'll get the copy of the letter?
Yes, sir.
And let everybody know about it?
Just let it, the number is there, you can let us know so we could, you know, just for our safety.
Where exactly is it being held?
You said in New Brockton, but like...
The Farm Center, the Farm Center.
She's from New Brockton also, woman.
She is, she's from here, 'cause she's the one who recommended that place to us.
Salamat Po.
You can try our Filipino food.
Yes, eh, yeah.
It's all Filipino food.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of Filipino food, so if you, you know, opt for it.
Okay, well, thank you for the information, I'll make sure we get the letter out.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I want, uh, under the Mayor's comments, a couple of things that are going on, uh, we are having our second, uh, and hopefully a more successful attempt of getting the planning commission together on the night of twenty-nine, correct? Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, at eighteen hundred in this room.
How many people do you have to have to attend the meeting for it to...
Well, we need, there's, the, the commission is supposed to be nine people, we have to get a quorum, there was a discussion on five to seven, but we, last meeting we held, we did not have a quorum. So, we're making an effort to, people that are on the list that have volunteered to, uh, work on the planning commission to get them to this meeting, we can get it off the ground. At the, uh, next council meeting, I'll announce which, uh, people are gonna be on the planning commission and what positions they will probably be filling. There is a, and I've, uh, there is a solution coming to the dog problem. Uh, I've been asked by the county not to, uh, tell you what that solution is at the moment, 'cause they're still working out some, uh, efforts with, uh, with the city of Enterprise, but they think they're gonna have a solution, hopefully, I would say, early next week. The, uh, I have been invited to, you know, we, we started our, uh, effort to work more closely with the Wiregrass Economic Development Commission, and in, in lieu of that, or not in lieu of that, but in addition to that, they got Grow Alabama, which is an organization for eleven counties in lower southwest Alabama. And I'm attending a, uh, meet and greet with the people from that organization on Wednesday morning and, uh, at the Dothan Ravens Sporting Clay Shooting Facility. So I'm going down there to, uh, I've talked to the Wiregrass people, they're going down, um, it's an opportunity to meet some industrial... Um, it's an opportunity to meet some industrial or at least commercial, uh, people that are working in the various counties. Maybe do a little handshake and see where we can work on that. So I'm working on that one. Gonna go down there and bust some caps. I think everybody saw the, the text message on the senior center, giving an update. Uh, Glenda is not feeling any, any problems at the moment, correct?
At the moment.
We took her to the, uh, emergency room where they did some x-rays. We did the, uh, blood alcohol and drug evaluation, uh, which I think have come back negative. We haven't heard any results, but we don't, we don't foresee any. Uh, working with the, uh, AMIC, there will be two, uh, insurance claims, one for the back porch of the building and one for the vehicle itself. Two things happening there, we're working also with the, uh, people that have granted that vehicle to us. Um, and we're gonna have to have a, AMIC is gonna come down and do an assessment on whether the vehicle is recoverable or not. If it's not recoverable, uh, the gentleman thought, and he's looking, I think he's looking already at a possible additional vehicle under the grant program. So we may be replacing that vehicle. Did I miss anything on that one?
Nope. Not that I, not that I think of.
Unless there are any other comments, it was mostly informational tonight on the items that we were working on.
The, uh, the lights of Joe Simmons are still on schedule for the week in November, though.
Okay. Comments from anybody else before we close? I think we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes? Dale?